So it is Thursday, March 3rd at 6:00 PM and I'm called this Lacey City Council meeting to order. And let's get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. I.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Through the flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic.
Which stands. Under God.
Indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
So we have a agenda and consent agenda. I am for us. I don't think there's any changes.
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as published.
Second.
It's been moving seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll bear that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion as it carries, we have approved that there is agenda and consent agenda items. Next up on our agenda is a public comment on items not on the agenda. We do have one person signed up for this, Christine. And I just want to remind Christine it's uh. Can be uh. If you're gonna talk about specific general issues, that's fine, but we can't talk about anything site specific in your in your public comment. So with that. Can you please unmute yourself? You can turn on your camera if you want. And you can keep your introduce yourself and keep your comments about three minutes.
Hi, my name is Chris Perazzo. I live over in Meriding Campus. And I've lived here for about three and a half years. We met with city staff and they did a traffic analysis about. Campus Glen over by Salish Middle School and they were very receptive and did a wonderful job sending out brochures to the local companies. About truck traffic. Unfortunately, we are still having big issues about the trucks. On Campus Glen that go right in front of the middle school. Early morning and after school, I was out at the street the other day and a truck came barreling down that road. So I think we still need to have some kind of focus and some kind of solution to make sure. That the code is changed on that street so that it's enforceable. Right now we have non-enforceable. Regulations on that street. So trucks are notified by big signs along the street. But it's not enforceable, so they cannot get a ticket for that. And we're really encouraging and bringing this to your attention so that the street on on Campus Glen. And also we have concerns on 31st Street changed the code. In a couple of weeks, the traffic will have another opportunity to take. You know, counts and everything, but I really wanted to bring it to the councils. Attention, because I'm not sure if you're really in the loop. Also, and I'm sure you know. That back in 2009, walk zones were encouraged by the state of Washington. And Salish Middle School fits right inside the walk zone for that neighborhood. So here we have children. Walking to Salish Middle School, crossing Willamette, and I've seen so many times, it's just not a safe. Situation whatsoever. I know. There's works of being put in a roundabout at that location on Wellamette and Campus Glen, but the whole area is just very, very dangerous. And then to think of a gas station be put there at Wellamette and Campus Glen is just.
Can't talk about site specific.
Oh, it's okay. I'll talk about the junior high.
Yeah, there's nothing that's coming before this council.
Oh, I got it. I got it. So I'm not sure how much poll the council has as far as. Changing the enforcement code on that street, but as we get closer to having another traffic review on those two streets, 31st and Campus Glen. I would really encourage the the council to get involved with that because it's not safe and it's not improving. Thank you.
Much for your comments. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else signed up for public comments? And we did not receive any written public comment. And so with that, we'll go on to our next agenda item. Which is our public hearing on the Crossroads Development Agreement Amendment. And with that, I will open up this public hearing on the Crossroads Development Agreement Amendment, and I'll turn it over to our.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Well, like I said, we're here tonight with another amendment to the Crossroads Development Agreement specifically as it pertains to lot O or lot four. So let me quickly share my screen. Okay, can everyone see that?
Yep.
Okay, great. So just. I'll try to be brief with my presentation so that we can, I have plenty of time for questions. But just as a quick context, here we have the original. Corporate Center, Lacey Corporate Center developed back in the early 90s by Mike Mastro. This obviously, of course, this development was originally required required to put in all of the infrastructure, utility infrastructure that's there today as well as the road system that's there as well. And then to the right here, we have the Lacey Crossroads Development, which is just the inset here in this portion. Under the roadway in the bottom right hand corner here. And this, of course, was approved by the council back in 1999 with the original development agreement. And. Our next screen here is right here on the left, we have our the current zoning of the property. Which is made up of both the community commercial designation and the community office designation. And I'll get to this right map here in a second. So. In 2018, many of you will remember, I we were here for the First Amendment to the Lacey Crossroads. Development. And at that time, we were looking, we had asked the council to. Basically allow all of the, I think it was 13 of the 17 lots that are in Crossroad to. Basically to, we were removing the lot specific uses that had been in place at the development agreement and allowing them to use to. Utilize the all of the uses that were in the underlying zoning of mostly of the community commercial and the community office space. And the main reason behind that, if you'll recall, was due to the increased flexibility of of the uses that are allowed in the community commercial designation. And the community office designation. And at that same time, council also authorized the city manager via resolution to. To enter into identical agreements with other property owners. In the crossroads area, because at that time it was just one property owner that the city was entering into that amendment with. And so while this lot, lot O here is, let's see, you can see on the right, while lot O was part of that original. Development or amendment, excuse me, the amendment of 2018. It was, it had a, and it currently has a community office designation as we can see here. And what what's before you tonight is a proposal to re-designate that to a different underlying zoning, the community commercial. And as as we all know, the retail market has changed drastically over the last 10 years, plus 15 years, 10 years, even the last few years with the pandemic. We've seen obviously a lot of changes in and retail and consumer demands. And so really what this allows, what allows the owner of the future or the owners of the property to do. Is have a lot of have some more flexibility and the types of tenants that they're they're able to lease in this property in in on their parcel. As staff noted in, as noted in the staff report. There's, you know, staff has staff looked at the information that the applicant submitted with part of this as part of this proposal. In terms of both the market analysis and the traffic and parking analysis and. Staff's analysis found that those the changes in parking, the increase in parking in the trips we're going to, were relatively relatively small. Just for. For context, it's help might be helpful to know that. There's about nine, probably between 925 and 970. PM peak trips still available in the entire Lacey Corporate Center for Development, which is a lot of PM trips of trips. And I believe this. Project is it would be adding, I think it was 80, 84 more than would be in our community office. So. While 84 may may seem seem like a lot in the whole context of how many trips are available in the corporate center, that's still. It's it's still a relatively small number. And obviously the parking as well. But anybody I think who has been to the crossroad site specifically to say the lowest site knows that there's a lot of parking in that area. And obviously the entire, the. Crossroads area is subject to cross parking agreements. And so that, you know, that parking is available for for multiple users on the site. So. So staff with that, I would say staff is is recommending that the the council approve the amendment to Crossroads Development Agreement as it pertains to lot O. And I think I will leave my presentation there and I'd be happy to ask if there are any questions.
You stop sharing your screen, please.
Absolutely.
John, can you bring in anyone wishing to make a comment on this? And if you're wishing to. Address the this council and make public comments on this, can you, when you come in, can you please use your raise your hand function on it? We do have several people who signed up to at least look at the the part of the public hearing. For example, Heather Burgess. Heather, do you want to? Oh, there you are. How you doing, Heather?
I'm I'm here. I didn't know if you needed me to find the electronic hand to mayor writer. I not.
Yeah.
Didn't go right to that little function. Sorry about that.
That's all right. I saw your name, recognized that if you want to go first, do you have anything you wish to address the council on this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name's Heather Burgess. For the record, I am. A land use attorney and I represent the property owner on this particular application. I also represented the original property owner when the last major amendment to the development agreement was done in 2018. Which is a much more significant amendment. Change not only underlying uses permitted by reverting to the new city's new zoning as Ms. Seymour described. But also change some design standards and guidelines and other specific. Items that were necessary at that time to improve the marketability of the property. That effort was successful, as you can see from the development that's occurred since the original modification. In 2018 and. The current property owner purchased the property from my my client. And desires to further modify it as Ms. Seymour explained in order to avail themselves of the community commercial designation. Which still allows most of the office uses permitted by community office. But offer some other opportunities for development that are consistent with current market conditions as was outlined in the materials. We did provide, as Ms. Seymour mentioned, is in in your packet, some traffic analysis and other information showing the difference between the two. Types of uses, which is not significant. And just really appreciate the staff's diligence and hard work in in working with us to try to get this in front of you this evening. My client, as I believe, and his realtor who wrote the market analysis are also here this evening. And can provide you with additional comments or information, but greatly appreciate staff's effort and the council's consideration of the amendment this evening. Thank you, Mayor Ryder.
Does anyone else wish to address the council on this? If you do, please use your raise your hand function. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, hi. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mate Holosian. I'm a local real estate professional and also resident live close to the. Crossroad subdivision and I'm a friend of the the property owner as well. And I just wanted to say that I'm in favor for this. Change for sure, as I described it on my letter, what I attached there, that is the property has been weakened for a long time right now and. And offices not coming back as we were hoping to here. And. For for a commercial use, I think it would just really benefit the community as a whole. We had initial conversation already with businesses that we believe would would bring great value to the to the neighborhood and. We would be all happy to to have them just. Again, for multiple reasons. So and I want to thank again for the also the council and the city of Lacey been really helpful. For processing this amendment. So it's funny to say that. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else wish to address the council on this issue? Please raise your hand or unmute yourself and go ahead.
Hi, my name is Yati Linkum. I'm a I'm proposing to buy my property lot that is I in the crossroads thing. And then, so I feel that. It should be allowed to have the commercial property designation changed because. It gives more foot traffic to the area and that would make it all better. I love how lazy has been approaching the development. I really commend you guys for being so good at. Being business friendly and I wish, I hope this is approved so that more business can come to our region. And more tax revenues generated because of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council?
I am one of the lot owners. And I really appreciate all the hard work and, you know, understanding the Lacey, you know, it's been very progressive. And I want to really appreciate that and thank you for your efforts.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Are there any questions from the council to staff on this public hearing? That comes from Greenstone.
The only question I have is, are we taking action on this? I don't see it on the agenda as an action item tonight, is it? Or? Because usually we don't take action at the public hearing. It's usually later in the agenda, but I don't see.
That's that's a good question. We usually close the public hearing and then later we take action on it, but. Rick, can you give us some insight?
Yes, and and what what the action is, we are requesting action tonight at the close of the public hearing. And the request, the recommended action requested action is to authorize the city manager to sign the amended. Supposed to include this lot under the commercial designation.
Okay, you'll see that as council under number, under the recommendation part of our thing. Is there any other questions? Councilor Cox.
Trying to play with the rules of engagement here, but would it be fair to describe the kinds of development we might. See that look a little different under this change, just in general terms?
That's a good question. What's the biggest difference between the past designation and this designation? What are the additional allowed uses?
Sure. So community, community office, some you'll recall, kind of morphed from the business park zone or the old business park zone from ages past. To the community office and those types of uses that really are more office heavy uses, anything from medical offices to. Research development, you know, professional service offices even allows for some some limited, some some residential as well. Versus the community commercial designation, which is more commercial focused. It allows for broader things like. Restaurants and retail, things that the community office designation just doesn't allow. But and I think as Ms. Burgess mentioned. One of the nice things about community commercials, that it also does allow for some of those things that we would see in community office. So this change to community commercial. Doesn't necessarily preclude things like dentist's office or other types of medical offices from locating in this. It just adds. It just gives more opportunity, more more uses really to the to the property owner. And the other thing I don't think I I mentioned in in my presentation, but it is in my staff report, is that it doesn't change any of the. Development standards in terms of the physical things we are expecting, because as we all know. Lacey Crossroads has a really high design standards, has very specific design standards. And so it won't change any of that. We will still expect the building to. Look the same way, you know, still meet those same things in terms of setbacks and building modulation, all that, those types of things as well.
Are there any other questions? I'll I'll make. I'll I'll make a comment here. This is actually the now the third time this is coming back to the council for a different designation. Two thousand and sixteen, it came to this council, we changed it from business park to the the community office. Because we needed more flexibility, because the market wasn't responding. And the council at the time said, yes, we agree, we need more flexibility. And by the way, are we being flexible enough? Couple of years later, two thousand and eighteen, came back, said, you know what? We need to change the destination again, because we need to be more flexible, because the past designation wasn't flexible enough. I remember a conversation at the time saying, okay, this council agrees. Are we sure we being flexible enough with this designation? Right? And now here we are back again and, you know, four years later, saying we need to change the destination again. Because the last destination's too restrictive. So. It just makes me wonder, are is the community, you know, are are we being flexible enough? To allow the type of development that we want in this area? I I don't want to be back here in two more years and say, oh, you know what? You know, community commercial wasn't wasn't good enough. We still haven't seen any movement on it. We need to change the destination again. Rick?
Well, the I think it's an important distinction that we're not changing the. The overall zoning classification. What we're changing is in the original master plan and identified areas that would be developed as community commercial and the areas that be developed under. The office commercial or formerly business park zoning classification. But as this projects move forward, there's various parcels that decide it made sense to be transitioned into the portion of the master plan. That would include the community commercial. So in terms of the flexibility we're getting, it's not the actual user zones. It's how the master plan is amended to reflect those uses. And and at the original master plan that was adopted in or approved in two thousand and six, there's a whole different. Process, market and conditions at the time, and it was still a very good master plan. But now, as we move forward, when it first came online, it hit the recession in two thousand and eight. But as we move forward, we're changing individual parcels within that to have that additional flexibility. The office market and the corporate center portion, that was a whole different transition zone. And so again, these these are incremental steps, but now with this last piece, there isn't any other parcels that may have. It's not developed that would be shifted from one part of the zone to the other within the master plan. So it's not a matter of the the zone classification, what they allow, it's how the master plan was designed originally and ultimately amended over time.
Well, you know, in the, you know, we've been very proud of of what we've done in in midtown with the form based code. Why aren't we just going to that here and in crossroads where we're allowing maximum flexibility? Doesn't really matter what type of businesses is more, we care more about, you know, how it's interacting with the other parcels. Can't we go to that now flexibility and then we're not, we're not going to have to come back to council. You know, sometime future and changes, change it again.
That that is a possibility, but a form based code, to develop a form based code is is a extensive process, working with the property owners. And it's a public process. We have a master plan that has a very high level and high quality design standards that those are also working. And it's mainly just those those designations within the master plan. If we done, been able to do the form base code, it would have been great to do that back in two thousand and seven, two thousand and six. But form based codes were taken hold at that time until we got to the point where we're doing the Woodland District Plan. So, yeah, that is a great tool, but this was, but the crossroads almost being built out and the design standards in place. It's really just a matter of what type of uses could be allowed where.
And so is this giving the the maximum flexibility at this point?
It is, because as as Samra talked about, the the uses within the two zones. The office commercial really is more of the office campus, you know, because corporate headquarters, it has medical offices. It has limited retail opportunity on ground floors, allows daycares and a limited residential on upper floors. With the community commercial designation, you have all the range of restaurants, retail uses, professional services. You also have the daycare, you have the office, but you also also have the opportunity for residential, but on upper floors. Again, getting to that more urban built design that would become from the urban or the form based code type of technique. So it does provide a lot more flexibility, especially since we have revised the old business park zone into that office commercial.
Okay. So you're promised me, this is the last time this is coming to council, if you're not gonna have to change it, because we're not, need to be more flexible.
I cannot make that promise, because you never know when a property owner has an issue, a market force change. And we need to work with that within the community vision and then what type of approval would be required through council.
Okay, Councilor Vasquez, do you have something?
Did Mate have something first? Mate, do you want to speak again?
Yeah, I guess I was just wanted to kind of back what I heard here also. Like the the reason also why we needed to have or would like to have this change, because there is other constraint on these lots too. So the top of the zoning, we also have to take into consideration of the the low CCNRs and the corporate center CCNR. So that's really kind of squeezing the the allowed use, what we can do on this particular lot. So definitely the community commercial would really kind of give a little breathing room there to to actually utilize it better. So just wanted to make a comment on that.
Okay, thank you for that, Councilor.
And is is this lot the last of the community office zone in this area? I was looking at the maps and I couldn't tell. It looks like from the parking. There is change that the community office district, there's not.
I believe there is one parcel left that is undeveloped that has the community office designation. And it is just it's sort of the northeast corner of this of this property.
Can we change that designation at the same time?
Well, I would, I would suggest, I would suggest, because we haven't talked with that property owner. And what their plans or desires are. But what we could suggest, similarly did with the last action, was with the council motion to include those parcels. That if that individual comes in to approach the city, that the city manager has the authorization to include that in as an amendment. Amendment without having to come back through the council full hearing process.
Sure, and I totally agree we should do that. Is there any other questions before a motion's made? Okay, with that, I'm gonna close this public hearing on the Lacey Crossroads Development Agreement Amendment. I'm open for a motion.
I I would move that we approve. Or we we allow the city manager to sign the Crossroad Development Agreement Amendment to include the the other lot. That is not part of this, but to give the city manager the authority to sign for that lot as well, so it does not have to come back before this council.
You know, check with my lawyers, that sound good?
Yeah, I just want to clarify and I'll check with Rick on this. The motion as as stated is fine, but it wouldn't be in this agreement. What I counsel's motion would be authorizing the city manager to enter into an a very similar or almost identical agreement. For that separate lot at a future date, if and when that becomes requested.
Set my motion amended.
Okay, and my other question, Rick, is is whether, I mean, the council passed a resolution a few years ago. And and included, I think, six or seven separate lots that could be amended. And is this extra lot already included in that resolution or was it not? It wasn't, okay.
It was not, because that's the reason why we had to come back tonight. We initially thought it was, we checked the resolution. And that was why we had to come back and get the council authorization.
So do we have a clean motion at this point?
We got a motion and we do we have a second on, Councilor Greenstein's? Yeah, three second. So there's a motion and a second on the amended motion, the second, because now now we're in to get discussion. Is there any discussion? I see none. So all in favor, all in favor of that amended motion, signified by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. Thank you, appreciate it, and thank you for choosing Lacey to develop, and we look forward to seeing what you have in store.
Thank you very much.
So next up on our agenda is under ordinances, ordinance sixteen sixteen. Twenty twenty-one encumbrance carryover budget amendment, it's Detroit.
Great, thank you, Mayor Ryder. Good evening, council. The item before your consideration tonight is a an ordinance relating to the two thousand and twenty-one budget. Incumbents carryovers, simply, but this is the first amendment to the two thousand and twenty-two budget. So what you're going to see included in the ordinance are projects, council initiatives, capital purchases. That were included and previously appropriated in the two thousand and twenty-one budget. But we were not able to complete those projects, so we would request the council carry these over into the two thousand and twenty-two budget. So they can be completed. Let me do have a full detailed listing of the proposed amendments. I do want to highlight a few areas, just because I I think it's worth kind of reviewing and checking in with council. Just to make sure the initiatives are 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 still on track. And there are a number of amendments relating to social services, such as the Genesis House Project, which the council just spoke about. A little bit earlier this, actually last month. There's about ninety-five thousand dollars for the senior services home share program, which was something that was authorized by council. In two thousand and twenty-one, there's a little bit of appropriation to basically make the last payments on the veteran affairs outstation improvements. There are a number of special projects relating to economic developments, such as food food truck site plan. And an incubator project that would be in conjunction with St. Martin's. As well as a an economic development investment holding place for the Woodland District, that's about four hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. And there is just under three million dollars included in this budget amendment for the relating to the new police station facility. Primarily the land and initial thirty percent design for that building. In terms of capital purchases and projects, we are proposing to continue on with the city's public records initiative project. As well as putting the final touches on a new website design. There are also a number of amendments relating to police equipment in terms of enhancements to technology. As well as the facility itself. Then finally, I'd like to just touch base on some initiatives for the regional athletic complex. And we have three projects included in the amendment relating to a fencing project, the completion of the design of the parking lot expansion. And the expansion and improvement to the security camera system there at the rack. So those are some highlights on what's included in the amendment. I'd be happy to answer any questions or provide more details if the council so desires. The recommendation would be for the council to adopt ordinance, adopt which would amend the two thousand and twenty-two budget. So back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions? Deputy Mayor? Oh, for some reason, we can't hear you. Which is weird, because you're not muted.
No, he said come back to him.
Okay, no, I want to see him to try to do like sign language and you have to. Explain it out to us, no?
I would move, I would move approval of ordinance number sixteen sixteen, twenty twenty-one encumbrance carryover budget amendment.
Second.
One second, any discussion?
Just to comment that this is. Such refreshing government flexibility, as someone who's more familiar with state budgeting practices. Where if you don't spend the money by the end of the biennium, it's just gone. It's great that we can continue to work on projects and move the money into the new biennium. I love that.
It's amazing how much more common sense there is in local government, isn't it?
Deputy Mayor, can you say anything? I I suggest you maybe you you come out and then maybe get back in, unless that you want to ask any advice to him.
Maybe this works.
Oh, there you go.
Hey. But as I was going through it, just last night looking at it, I didn't understand the the Woodland District one for four hundred. It was, it seemed a little bit vague and I Troy Troy said that's a, that's a, those are placeholder dollars. What is it? What what are we gonna do with those? I didn't get it.
Can you explain that, Troy?
Sure, so this is actually a a project that's been carried over at least twice, maybe three times. It originally started as a potential investment into infrastructure that would allow larger developments to occur within the district. Those projects haven't come to fruition yet, so we do want to preserve that. This has been a development area that's been certainly a priority for the council. We want to make sure we maintain that flexibility and opportunity to make those investments to help spur the development in that district. But at this point, nothing specific has been identified.
All right, thank you.
The W Mayor, those are probably completion of the street grid within the midtown area, potential underground utilities. To expand capacity. So those are some of the thoughts that we had. We have nothing specific at this time.
That goes way back when we were thinking about midtown and what we can do to spur development in midtown. Lots, lots changed since then, and we've seen a lot of development come in, but you know, there's still some things that we can do there as well. Any other questions? Then there's a a motion, a second to adopt the proposed amendment, ordinance amending the twenty twenty-two budgets. I'll bear that motion, signify by saying aye. Is there anyone opposed? And that motion unanimously carries.
I did have one quick question, though.
Well, after the motion, go for it.
Sorry, it's it doesn't, you know, it's it doesn't change anything, but I was I was crunching numbers last night and I was like, I didn't know if there was like a a percentage. That we couldn't exceed in a budget amendment. As I as I was working out their percentages and just kind of looking at it, and so I didn't know if there was some kind of rule that existed.
No.
It's no, there's no fixed percentage limitation. It's really limited to, you know, what funds are available. So, you know, in theory, although we haven't closed out the two thousand and twenty-one budget year, since we didn't spend this money in two thousand and twenty-one. We assume that those fund balances are available currently in order to fund these projects. So as long as we have the cash available, we could amend the budget.
That's a good question, Troy. When when are you gonna close out next flash year?
Oh, we just, February is the last date that we receive revenues. We have a number of adjustments in terms of preparing our financial statements. I'm hoping that it comes and we're we're planning to present some of that information to the council as you enter into retreat at the. I believe it's towards the end of April. We typically try to have our annual financial statements completed by April thirtieth to prepare for the the next next audit. And our submission of that report to the Government Finance Officers Association for the the annual award. So on that same same timeframe.
That's good. Thank you very much.
Time to start the next budget cycle.
On the next one. And just real quick under the mayor's report, I just, I I do want to get a report out that. Been working hard in the community about trying to get our Lacey Community Foundation up and going. I've been meeting with, you know, several community leaders to talk about what the foundation is gonna do. And how it's gonna support the city of Lacey and and building our community. Several projects that are near and dear to our hearts with the the Lacey Museum and Cultural Center. Of course, being that the the main one we're we're fundraising for now, but also the the Great Kyo Park. Is another one that we're all very excited about, and we know there are several phases. And if you look at the final price tag, it's a lot. So it's gonna, the, we're gonna need the foundation to go out for grants. So we can help supplement what the city is doing. And so there's a, for example, there's REI has a huge big grant that you can apply for, but it's not available to cities. It's only available to five oh and C three's nonprofits. So, you know, this will be something that the Lacey Community Foundation will be working closely. In support of the the city of Lacey going going forward. We've never had the opportunity to do this before, because we haven't had a foundation. But we're we're going along pretty strong. Um, but we're, we're going along pretty strong. Um, we already have about eighty thousand dollars um, in the first couple of weeks of going out and talking to, uh, the Lacey Community supporters. So it's a, it's exciting time to really talk about all the exciting things that are going on in Lacey and good things that can happen once you have a foundation up and started. Still want to give a quick shout to the, the, um, Park Foundation, who's our fiduciary right now. They're the ones that are, the money is going to them under the five ones, using their five O and C three status under the Lacey Community Foundation Fund under their, under the park. Um, without them, we wouldn't be able to get to the next step to actually have our own standalone foundation at some point. So I just want to give a quick shout to Park Foundation. They're, they've been great and enjoyed working with them. And which is really cool, transition to, to the city manager to talk about the Great Kuyyo Phase One Design Award.
Hey, Mayor. So we have Ashley Smith to provide the presentation on the design award for the Great Kuyyo Phase One A process.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm here to bring before you tonight a professional services agreement for design services of Phase One A of Kuyyo Park. As councils aware, the master plan for park improvements was approved at the February third council meeting. Uh, and this first initial phase is intended to provide public access to that, uh, park property. So city staff is recommending award of Lacey contract number PW twenty twenty two dash zero six to HBB Landscape Architecture in the amount of seven hundred and thirty four thousand, three hundred and twenty one dollars and zero cents. I'm happy to answer any questions about the project you may have.
Questions? Can I get a motion?
Move to approve the awarding of the contract. I don't, I don't remember the name or the dollar. I don't have it in front of me.
I'll make the motion for you.
Would you?
For the Lacey contract, uh, number PW dash twenty twenty two zero six to HBB Landscape Architecture from Seattle, Washington, amount of seven hundred and three, four thousand, three hundred and twenty one dollars.
I'll second that.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion? See, I'm, I'm just, go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Um, so I was looking at the, at the map and I I, I guess I was just kind of unclear what exactly they're going to do. Are they, is this, is this for just, I know it's pretty much for dirt work? And is it to design the, the trail work or in, in clear it or?
I can answer this question. The, this scope of this contract is for design services to prepare plans and specifications for bidding, uh, with the intention of bidding this project early next year in conjunction with the grant cycle that we're, we'll be applying for. Um, the physical work for this phase includes, uh, two driveway entrances, one for maintenance and emergency vehicles and one for public access with, uh, parking stalls. I, I don't have the number of stalls in front of me. About a hundred acres of area that will be in, covered in trails, primary and secondary, and an eighteen hole disc golf course. Uh, there's also the first phase of the playground will be included in this work.
So wha- what are we going to do about the, the whole, the bathrooms? I know that is going to be an expense that we need to look at. Sooner or later, we need to get water and sewer over to this property. Is
Great question.
Is included in this now or not?
Not yet. Uh, this work will, will include temporary facilities, uh, like porta potties to put onsite just for this initial access. The bringing utilities is, is going to be a significant amount of money, and we intend to bring that forward as the next phase of the project, uh, with fire hydrants, water, sewer, and a full restroom.
So, um, you, you bring up the disc golf course, which is, of course, very exciting for a lot of people in and out of our, of our community. It's, it'd be a championship style golf, disc golf course. Or I wasn't unaware that they were going to design the disc golf course. I thought that, um, someone else might be designing the disc golf course.
It will be in partnership with the Disc Golf Association, so the, the design consultant will um, loop them into the project team and take their recommendations and document those on the plans and specifications.
I, I, I did let Jen know that there is a, a company that designs this golf courses and he he originally lived here and is now someplace in Tennessee or something like that. And you heard about this project, you would come back and said he would help with that. I just, hopefully there's a follow up on that concerning, he's been saying he'd give us some services for free because it's his hometown.
Absolutely. Yeah, our intent is to take recommendations of, of local and professional disc golf groups and then have HBB memorialize that for construction.
Great. Is there any, go ahead, Councilor Vasquez.
And two questions. Um, hopefully my internet is okay. One, it looks like this isn't the total cost for the design. So at what point do you anticipate coming back to request the remaining fifty thousand?
The remaining fifty thousand will not be a contract for HBB Landscape Architecture. Those will be additional fees incurred by the city for um, remaining, correct, and, um, engineering services in-house.
And then the second question, I know that there are reasons that we are selecting this um, contractor to perform this work, but is this a competitive price for this type of work?
Yes, yes. Our, if you compare this to our estimates for construction of this phase, they are very competitive.
Any other discussion? It's been moved in second to award the Slaysey contract number PW twenty twenty two dash zero six to HB Landscape Architecture. I'll in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? And that motion unanimously carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we're definitely looking forward to that getting started as soon as possible.
We'll start tomorrow.
Perfect. So anything else, anything else, City Manager? Good. Let's get on to, um, sending general committees. First up is the Finance and Economic Development Committee. Um, I looked through it and I, I think we've discussed all, everything that's been in that committee report, so I'll go on to the General Government Public Safety Committee.
General Government met on January twenty fifth. We had, um, just a few things here to, to cover. First, we were introduced to our new deputy police chief, Robert Hollis. So for those who haven't met him, take the opportunity to meet our new deputy chief. Should be a great asset and a great addition to our police force. Um, we had got an overview of the twenty twenty and twenty twenty one crime statistics from Chief Omato. Um, you know, it's, it's really pretty refreshing when you see a lot of what's going on around the country in different places about what an incredible job our police force does and the support they get from our local citizens. You know, the Lacey community is very supportive of our police and they, they earn that. Um, you know, they do everything in their power to deescalate situations. And when you hear all the numbers and, and the reports available, then you want to see it, but they responded to over thirty eight thousand calls and force was only used in thirty eight of those calls. And tha- that includes everything from the most minor use of force. So most, almost all of that force was extremely minor. There were no injuries reported from any of that to either the officers or those who were the recipient of the force. So our police force just does an outstanding job. And I just want to make sure we recognize them for that. And then the only other item on the agenda that, that afternoon was, uh, the tree maintenance program, which was presented to us by Russell Greer. The, their responsibility includes all of the Lacey parks, so four hundred and sixteen acres of parkland, uh, all of the Lacey owned properties and rights away. And they handle the planting, replanting, pruning, and damage remediation on all of those trees. So another area of our city that, again, does a great job. I mean, as everyone knows, we have a beautiful city, a lot of great trees, and, uh, those are all handled by personnel that work for the city. So that is my report.
Thank you. Land Use Committee.
Um, Plan Use Committee, um, has covered things that have already come before the council, so we've already voted.
Uh, the Transportation Committee.
Uh, Transportation met on February first, uh, the last time we met. And, uh, that meeting was, you know, primarily about, uh, the snow and our snow response. And so, uh, it was, you know, a lot of different, uh, divisions of the staff stepped up, uh, crews were called on Christmas night, got to work at three AM. Uh, in, in, in the next day, it starts snowing again. They went on twelve hour on, twelve hour off shifts. Uh, night crews were focused on improving traction and signalized intersections, um, plowing, sanding, deicing. Uh, we compared this to February twenty twenty one snow, and, uh, in February twenty twenty one, it snowed eighteen inches uh, over about three days. Uh, we did not get that much snow this time. Uh, it just, it lasted about a week. We used a little over forty three gallons, forty three thousand gallons of deicer, um, at eleven cents a gallon, thirty five tons of salt. Um, the cost of the entire, uh, you know, the entire cost came to about a little over thirty seven thousand dollars. Uh, then we also talked about the, the water that, you know, continues to cover Rainier Road, uh, from time to time, and uh, we did have to shut it down one time, I believe, last month. Uh, having driven Rainier Road today after, you know, taking a look at and, and hearing from City Manager about, you know, the water and, and what, what happens. It looks like it was, it was, it's, gets fairly well displaced. And it actually looks like there's a retention pond that, that, um, because I remember asking about, you know, is there anywhere we can build, you know, this water to? Uh, in, in times where that road would flood or whatever the case may be. And, and I remember Scott Egger saying, you know, we just, we don't have that capacity right now. There's no, there's not a real place that we can do that. But, um, as I drove it today, it looked like it's, it's back under control. And so, uh, staff put in a lot of, a lot of hard hours, you know, to make sure that we had, uh, drivable streets, you know, the next morning and the morning after that, seeing them, you know, out there, three trucks in a row plowing and doing all the so, you know, kudos to staff for, for making sure that we had, you know, good roads to drive on. And that is my report.
Thank you. I, I also wanted to bring something up, and I'm not, I know I'm just throwing this out here to, to the council, but, um, I know this council's been pretty aware of the, the Lebanon Street. And, uh, we had several members come in or were upset about now Lebanon being a pass through. Um, we did go through a process and that process then put some traffic calming out there. And there's, according to our own policy, that traffic calming was there for a certain amount of time. And then um, the next step was there's a vote of the, the people in that area to whether it would go permanent or not. But if it goes permanent, there is a big cost involved for it to go permanent. Um, it had to be sixty percent vote, and then there's a cost involved. Um, and it, it sounds anecdotally, maybe that a lot of people were voting no on that because they couldn't, they didn't want to pay the dollars to do that. And I, I, I just feel like that policy needs to be looked at. I mean, if, if sixty percent of, uh, your population really thinks something has happened, um, but they say no because they can't afford to do it, doesn't feel like a very, um, good policy in my opinion. I don't know where the rest of the council's on this, but, um, I'm, I'm feeling a little weird about that circumstance. Scott?
So the Transportation Committee did have an extensive discussion about this specific issue as well as a policy. Um, I believe the cost to, um, proper owners was two hundred dollars. Our policy basically says we will split the cost depending on what the traffic calming device is. And the policy's in place because I recognize the fact that traffic is sometimes localized. And so the, it begs the broader question from a policy level is, is this a problem for the entire community? Or is it just limited to that neighborhood? And I think the halfway position is the city would pay for half of it and then the neighborhood who benefits directly from that traffic calming pays for the other half. And so that's what that policy's been in place for a number of years.
Okay, well, um, I'm not sure if I, I agree, totally agree with that policy, but, uh, Councilor Greenstein.
That just brings up a question on that policy. When you say the neighborhood pays for half, city pays for half, what defines that neighborhood? So is it the houses that are necessarily on, you know, directly on that street or what, what defines the neighborhood?
Yeah, the, depending on the traffic situation, the boundaries are identified. We had a similar situation in the Panorama, Panorama area. And it typically is that street that is fronting or having the traffic issue. It's typically a speeding issue or a cut through issue, and so it is defined by that street, more or less.
But here's the problem. The reason why this happens is usually there's a change in land use, right? In this case, Lebanon Street went in. And so now people are from outside that area are now using Lebanon to cut through. It's not the fault of the people who live on Lebanon Street that that's happening. It's a change in land use that happens. That's the overall community. And so now you're saying, okay, those who live on Lebanon Street, you're going to have to cover this because we change your land use on you.
So this.
Probably something we should have a deeper policy discussion on rather than here, though.
I agree. I just want, I, I couldn't just go by, um, you know, we, I just can't let things, when I see that.
I'm with you. We should have it, we should have a deeper discussion on it.
Well, let me add, we did a deep dive into this and actually the extension of Lebanon Street wasn't definitive. It actually negatively impacted the neighborhood. And so when you started looking at the traffic volumes and the speeds, um, it wasn't validated by data. And so that was some of the analysis that was done. And to the credit of the Transportation Committee, we probably met on this four different times. And at the one point, we didn't get enough votes. We actually went out again and asked people to vote and to make that stretch.
What I'd recommend is, uh, before we get to the point further, Scott, what I recommend is you just give a quick debrief to the council on this, uh, yeah, work, work session, so you can explain this to us all because there's only three people on, on, on the Transportation Committee. I'm, I probably will agree with your, uh, reasoning here, but I need, I need a person. I agree this is not the place to do it. It's fair enough.
So we'll schedule for future discussion.
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
So this corridor did not even meet the minimum standards to advance this for consideration. The council made an exception because of how vocal a few people were. So this didn't even meet the minimum criteria to begin with. The Lebanon extension had absolutely zero influence on it. And the total cost, you know, is two hundred dollars. So in my humble opinion, the pro, you know, the process worked.
Okay. I just would, I would just love to hear that process for the, so I can feel good about it. You know? Fair, fair enough? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Um, next up is the Community Relations and Public Affairs Committee.
Councilmember Stedman is not here. Would you like me to give that one?
Yes, please.
Okay, um. At the February seventh meeting, we had two agenda topics. One was on the Neighborhood Association Grant Program. Um, council had previously approved sixty thousand dollars for the two thousand twenty two grant program that neighborhoods could apply for, for improvements, beautification, effort, safety, that sort of thing. Um, so neighborhood associations, you have until April first to get your applications in. We should be able to, um, notify you of funding awards um, between April eighteenth and twenty second. And important to know this year is that project completion is expected by December thirty first. And a new guideline was passed because what, we've had an occasion where neighborhoods have not completed the project that they were awarded money to do, which has resulted in funds not actually getting utilized. So i- if there is a situation like that uh, and a project is not completed by deadline and results in unused grant money, the HOA will not be able to participate in the following year's grant program. So it's an effort to try to make sure that the money is put to good use. Um, we also had a brief presentation on the, um, city's, um, gets a free day each year for, uh, the Washington Center, and we typically um, receive applications from different groups who would like to use that free day to have a performance there. Um, the, um, deadline to apply to the city, if you are one of those organizations, is July thirty first. So that's coming up. That's the report.
Thank you. I'm just adding a little bit of commentary to here, too. Um, right now, our neighborhood grant program is only available to HOAs. And the, and the reason why we only do it for HOAs is because, um, there usually has to be a match part of it where um, people have to agree to put some type of labor wherever else, you know, into it. However, um, there's a lot of neighborhoods in Lacey that do not have HOAs, but they could have community members within that neighborhood. But they could have community members within that neighborhood that could get together and say, hey, we want to do a project. We're all willing to put the time and effort into it. We all agree can do it. We should be able to apply for this and and be able to do a project within our neighborhood, even though it doesn't have an official HOA. You know, that. You know, and 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 the reason why I bring this up is because a a lot of these projects um that are really needed. Are in our older neighborhoods that don't have HOAs, right? And and so it feels like um if you can get a group of. Your neighbors together and you want to do something. Um those neighbors should be able to get together and be able to apply for a neighborhood grant program, as long as they're willing to meet the same criteria. As what's listed out in this grant program, but they're not currently able to do that. And I. I don't feel that's right.
I agree.
Councillor Greenstein?
Uh Tom Water has a similar program and they do allow neighborhoods that are not HOAs to participate. Uh so I mean, it's certainly doable. I I I would agree with you on that. I don't see any reason we should distinguish on this between an HOA or not HOA.
Thank you. So Scott, can we talk about that?
Add it to the list.
I'm just populating next time's agenda tonight, right now.
Sorry, I just, you know.
Yeah, we could talk about.
Do noted. Thank you. Uh next up is the Utilities Committee.
Mayor, so last meeting was February seventh and we had. Information on the step grinder maintenance process by Tom Sage, uh wastewater uh senior maintenance tech. And uh kind of interesting for those who may not quite understand how a step step system works. Uh but it is essentially a septic tank uh and uh. A grinder that helps the with folks uh sewage in some areas in Lacey. Some of the uh takeaways, uh just reminding citizens on the dangers of flushing wipes and. Oils and grease and things like that into these systems can wreak havoc on uh the step system. And uh just good to be mindful of what kind of system you have and you remember and probably. That is pretty much the long and short.
Yep, that's a big one. The those those fogs, those fats, oils and greases, they're. It's really tough on our on our system. It's even tougher on the step systems. And so. You know, hopefully everyone who's listening, you know, please don't dispose of that down your drain, you know, put it in a different receptacle. Because we, the whole system ends up paying for it. It doesn't just magically disappear when you put it down your drain. You you like to think it just goes away and it doesn't cause any problems, but it does cause a lot of problems on our system. And we end up having to. Pay for it one way or the other. So um hopefully everyone who's listening can understand that. And please don't put that down your drain. Um with that, let's go on to boards, commissions and committee reports. Uh I'm up first, but I've already reported out. On the TPB and the mayor's forum, so I will go to the deputy mayor.
Okay, I do have one uh Thurston County EDC uh in me and. Uh number one agenda item was the broadband action team. And the broadband action team is, you know, specifically specifically designed to, you know, assess our areas broadband and. See who's not getting, you know, uh broadband and who's who's not really, you know, getting connection speed and. Uh just doesn't have good connection. A lot of this was, um you know, during COVID and when kids had to go. You know, and and learn from home, uh and they needed broadband access, it really kind of exposed, you know, more so, you know, what was missing in in the community. Uh the broadband action team is uh the participants are Thurston TRPC, uh the county. The EDC, the Port of Olympia, uh the Nisqually Indian Tribe and the Thurston PUD. And again, the the goal is to ensure equitable access to affordable, reliable. And quality broadband for all Thurston County residents, businesses and entrepreneurs. If you were to go look up broadband action team. You'll see that, you know, pretty much every county in the state of Washington has one. Uh and they are all pretty much working on the same goal as directed by legislation. Um they do have some challenges because infrastructure is not always um available or present in a lot of the communities. Uh in a lot of the outlying areas. And so uh in some of our outlining areas, uh the Nisqually Tribe is really taking taking the lead. Uh and out there trying to build infrastructure current, you know, out there getting grants to do different types of. Of uh infrastructure. So when you, when you do your infrastructure, you know, it it's based on terrain. And so there's underground fiber, there's aerial. Uh and and in in order to to meet the different types, you know, you've got to be. A lot of your grant work has to be uh what they call shovel-ready. And so you have to do some work prior to applying for the grant or to even be able to receive the grant. Uh so to date, um they have uh applied for over twenty-five million in grants. Um the twenty twenty-two request is over thirty-five million. And uh they're receiving a lot of those grants because they, you know, are shovel-ready in a lot of cases. So they they will be, you know, basically the holders of the infrastructure for the outlying areas. Uh and and they have been working really hard to to make that happen. The uh. The only other item that that came up before us um was the WIDA Winter Conference. Uh which was yesterday. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend. Uh so I'll be getting, you know, back with uh. With the executive director Kade uh on what happened at the conference. Maybe I can brief on that in a couple of weeks from now. And that is my report.
Great, thank you. Councillor Cox.
Okay, um Climate Action Steering Committee met on February twenty-eighth. Um a few highlights from that, we were learned that now all four jurisdictions. Have signed the long-term governance agreement. Um and the next step there is that we're going to put out a recruitment in coming weeks for people interested in serving on a. Um advisory committee that will help develop priorities and a work plan and an annual report for this. Um we heard present, two presentations, one on carbon sequestration. Kind of an explainer about what it is, what it does. And essentially, you know, the two primary. Ways you can sequester carbon are through trees, uh tree canopy and in. Um ag land where it actually literally is absorbed into the soil. Um of note there, uh Thurston County's um climate mitigation plan. Goals, sequestration. Um relies on sequestration to meet about ten percent of of the goal there. So it's an important part of it. We also heard a presentation from a representative from King County Government. On a, what's called a carbon offset program they have up there where, say, a property owner. Uh can come into the program, agree to hold the land undeveloped for like a hundred years. The city sells, then uh companies can buy carbon offset. For that. And the money incoming into this allows them to um keep expanding the program. And so the idea is to. Maintain and even increase the tree canopy in um the county. And Seattle has a pilot program, urban program that is um not quite as extensive, but. But tries to accomplish the same goal of. Tree canopy preservation and carbon offset and reductions there. Uh what will meet next week on March ninth? And I have just one more quick report. And get back to my notes here on the um Regional Housing Council met on the February twenty-third. We're see, we're in the process of accepting applications, are seeking applications from various um. Social service agencies for the state and federal housing funds that the Housing Council administers. They, there won't be as quite as big a program this year because last year we we. Tentatively approved two-year awards provided the funding was there to carry them out. But there there are still some important things. And we were able to do some increases for the like extreme weather. Hazardous weather program. We elevated that funding amount from two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand to four-hundred-thousand, for example. And other things. The uh county and city of Olympia are working on an agreement that would pair up Olympia's home fund. Uh revenue with the revenue that will be generated by the county's new home fund. Uh tax collections on that start July first. Olympia is going to retain a portion of its receipts. Um in the short term to continue funding programs that are ongoing right now, so they don't get cut off. Um and the Housing Council, we're kind of at this, you know, pivot place. We're going to be having a retreat. This spring, uh we're going to include leaders of the Thurston Thrives Housing Action Team. Um to kind of bring in their expertise and figure out ways that. We can work better together to accomplish our housing goals. Um and lastly, the uh council agreed to increase its meeting frequency to twice a month. Because we're dealing with so many time-sensitive issues. So we, the tentative plan, and we may end up tweaking this a little bit, is to have a short business meeting. Um or in the earlier part of the months. And that would just be for. Business items. There won't be any presentations and that sort of thing. And then a fuller meeting at our standing meeting time. And that is my report.
Thank you. Um councillor Greenstein.
I have a couple of reports tonight. Uh TCOM nine-one-one actually has met twice since my last uh report, but I've. Got that narrowed down to to give you one report that kind of combines the two. So we were having some uh significant phone system issues. You may recall, I know some of you may, that we were actually down for a considerable amount of time at nine-one-one. Couple of months ago. And the calls all had to be uh diverted actually to Spokane for uh to be handled. So that generated a pretty serious letter of complaint to the phone system vendor. Uh we've actually seen some significant increase in their flexibility and their ability to. To step up and help and try to resolve the issues. They they were, it was feeling like they were a little bit um. I don't know, reluctant, I guess, might be a good word in at one point. But uh things are moving along at a much better pace now. They've actually been here on site a few times now and are are making great corrections and moving in a good direction. That we don't believe will have future phone issues. Um also, we've had a significant telecommunications recruitment, probably the most successful in anyone's memory. Uh we had fifty applicants, thirteen of whom made it to the point of getting an interview with the director, eight of whom have actually been hired. So that's the most we've ever hired at one time. Uh all eight of those will start training on the fourteenth of March. Uh our normal training program is for for telecommunications at a time. So they're still trying to work out the logistics of where they're going to put everyone. But uh because of the significant need for more people. We are going to take all eight of them and put them all through the training at the same time, so that we can be set up. Um. The radio system site work is has started and is ongoing. And in fact, we've received our first shelter. Which is what was, has put us behind a bit because LNI's approval of the shelters, we've now received the first one. And the training and backup center is uh the work on that site is just begun. And that actually will be in leasing. The backup center for TCOM. So that is my TCOM report. Uh EMS Medic One met on the sixteenth of February. Uh the chair was unavailable, so I actually chaired that meeting. It was a relatively quick meeting, only a couple of items I want to share. One is the nominations committee presented nominees for chair and vice chair. Uh they only had one nominee for each, which is the same as the current chair and vice chair. So next month we'll approve that. Um we also have approved three applications for consideration by West Region EMS. So that's a multi-county regional EMS program. Uh we are trying to appoint people from Thurston County to open positions on that board to get a bigger voice for Thurston County. Because right now Pierce County um somewhat dominates that conversation. And we want a bigger voice here for Thurston County. So. We have put forth three applications. Um one of those is Wendy Hill to represent dispatch. Uh she is the executive director of TCOM. Uh Deputy Chief Todd Carson for Emergency Management Rep and myself as a local elected representative. And that is my report.
Um next up, uh councillor Mike Stedman is, excuse his absence, he can be here with us tonight. So we'll go on with uh councillor Kunkel.
And Mayor? So quite a bit, actually. Uh join Animal Services uh last Thursday, the uh February seventeenth. I got to tour the animal shelter. Uh thanks Sarah Hawk for uh orchestrating that. And I tell you, the environment in and around that shelter, if you haven't seen it, uh it's pretty humble, to say the least. Uh we definitely need an upgraded facility uh that needs to be in the works in the in the coming years. Uh but I do like uh, you know, that property have five acres of territory to work with. And uh so there are, there are some perks there we could uh look into for future builds or improvements. And overall, I was really impressed by the organization as far as best use of the facility uh to accommodate their needs. Uh they were making lemonade out of lemon, uh to put it mildly. But uh my hat goes off to the folks that are working in there and making do with what they have. Uh yesterday's forum for Leaky South County Chamber, uh keynote speaker was our own city manager Scott Pitt. Gave a presentation on the state of the city, and I believe it was very well received by the folks that were there yesterday. And our main forum keynote speaker coming up will be congressional member Marilyn Strickland. And registration is now open uh for participants and sponsors for upcoming annual golf chamber tournament. Uh starting on May thirteenth. The uh VCB Board, we met last uh February fifteenth. To reveal our draft strategic plan for twenty-two and twenty-four. Uh there was quite a bit to it. Uh but some of the highlights were revised shared vision and mission. Our vision is to be known as a top travel destination for the Pacific Northwest. Our mission is we reveal the most iconic Thurston County experiences for the world to discover. Some of the many important goals of our VCB Board are growing the Certified Tourism Ambassador Program. Uh I personally took that program and it's a really good uh, really good thing to do. You learn a lot about your local community you may not have already known. And uh improving our web and social media presence and visits, improving upon a gathering of our uh visitor sentiment survey. Uh improving our alignment with community partners for guidance on the future of tourism. And helping stakeholders understand who impact crime and cleanliness have on tourism. There was much more to the strategic plan than I so want to impress with the focus and dedication. Of our new leader, CEO and its pit and their staff, looking forward to seeing great improvement to tourism in our region. And last but not least, uh Solid Waste, we met yesterday, covered the planned waste characterization study, which will commence this year. Uh that's going to provide data uh tracking progress towards waste production and proper diversion of the various types of revenue. We will also be engaging in stakeholder uh, yeah, with stakeholders to improve the capacity. And capability of the work and the transfer stations in South County. And we also had a refresher on the open public media task and updated our Bible. And that is my report.
Councillor Vasquez.
I have a report.
Great.
Yeah, um so three committees. First off, I'll start with Orca. They met on February ninth and had some things to say and farewell to Fran McNair, who's been the director at Orca since two thousand nine. So she's led them through a lot of change and she's departing. She's going to retire in May. And she's passing the baton to Jeff Johnston. Uh who's the new director. So I got to go and meet him and have sort of a new board member orientation this last week. Learned that Orca's been around for about sixty years, which is pretty neat. And also that Thurston County is heavily represented on Orca's board, if anyone doesn't know. Um there's a representative from each of the six counties that are a part of Orca on the board. But also one representative from each of the largest three cities in that six-county area. And Thurston County has all three of the largest cities in the six counties. So we have a representative from Lacey, Tom Water and Olympia as well. As well as a representative from each of the counties, so I thought that was kind of neat. Um, as far as the intercity transit meeting, we met on February twenty-first. And talked about transportation signaling and smart corridors, excuse me, not February twenty-first, we met. February twenty-eighth or March first, or earlier this week, time is a flat circle. Um, we got a briefing about transportation signal priorities and smart corridors, which is. A lot of fancy words for the way that we arrange transportation. Policy so that buses can get where they're going faster, right, so they're not waiting for a long time, idling, spending gas, kicking out pollutants. At intersections, but so that we can give them priority so they can get going faster, and then people get where they're going on the bus on time. Uh, they're also working on a project that's been in the, works for a long time. To allow for a direct merge for buses when they're getting into the Lacey, um. Park and ride, like the Lacey Transportation Center, right now buses that are going in there have to make a left turn, and a lot of times they have to wait for a long time. So the project in the works that would allow buses to get in there without having to make that left turn. Like a direct route for buses to get in and out of the transit center, which will speed things up if you're riding the bus, which is a good thing. So stay tuned for more updates on that project. Uh, the Thurston Regional Planning Council met on February fourth, and they're meeting again tomorrow. Last time, we got an update on the regional federal grant program, so Thurston. Regional Planning Council sort of coordinates our grant efforts related to transportation planning when we go ask the feds for money. And they have a way of ranking those requests according to the goals that have been identified by TRPC, so, you know. They give it, they look at it through an equity lens, like who does the project benefit if we get the money to do this project? Does it help us meet our climate goals, right, is it supportive of building additional residential units within a half mile of an urban center? So people don't have to drive as far, so we're reducing carbon emissions, so they gave us an update on how they're going to be doing that. And we're waiting for more information about what criteria applications will actually have to satisfy with the federal government, so. Again, it's, we're kind of in the middle of that. And we got an update on the Thurston Regional Trails Plan, so tomorrow we're talking about housing attainability and the housing action plan for Thurston County. And that's my report.
Great, yeah, we've been working on that updated criteria for the federal funding for quite a while, and so. We're finally getting to it, and it looks like that there will be a, a first call for projects this fall that will be under the new criteria. But we're still sort of working through that process. And with that, we have reached the end of our agenda, we had a pretty quick agenda, so my recommendations, we go right into the work session. And just get, get through with that, is, are we okay with that? Are we ready to go straight to the work session?
Is it a separate link or is it here?
Same right here, we'll stay right in the room, we'll continue. So let's, let's, let's do that, let's, uh, quit, let's, uh, adjourn to the work session right now, where we're going to be talking about lots proposed. Affordable Housing Support Program. We'll bring in Mike.
Yes, thank you, uh, thank you for having us. So Matt Cannelli and I are here tonight to just, uh, give you a brief update. On one of the elements that has come out of a rather lengthy study that we've been doing over the years, looking at. A lot of data that we recognize needed to be looked at in terms of now and in the future regarding. Uh, how Lot funds its operations. In any event, a number of things have come out of that process, but one of them that has been very timely and has a lot of people kind of talking. Is the idea of how Lot might participate in or support, uh, affordable housing in the community. So, uh, we've been looking hard at that, and, uh, we are going to update and brief the board, uh, this next Wednesday when we have our meeting. And so, uh, Matt's going to just sort of take you through where we are on that right now and what that looks like.
Thanks, Mike. Can everybody see that all right?
Yep, we can.
Okay, great, so, yeah, as Mike mentioned, so this is, this is a concept at this point that we're going to be talking to the Lot Board about. Um, and so your feedback here tonight or to a board member, Lot Board Member Cox is appreciated. So, yeah, as Mike mentioned, we have, uh, received a lot of feedback from the partners as far as Lot playing. Uh, playing a role in the affordable housing approach in our community. Um, and primarily because Lot's connection fee is, is a large, the, the highest part of the overall. Uh, connection fee for a, for a given, uh, connection, so. Um, what a concept would look like for affordable housing from Lot's perspective. Would be very similar to the septic rebate program that's been successful where there's a pool of funds for connection charges. Um, that is distributed among the partners, the Lot Partners, the cities in this case, as far as the connections go. So what we would envision would be a two-year pilot, so we're just entering our next biennium, twenty-three and twenty-four. And this pool of funds would, um, be shared by the partners under some frameworks, some flexible framework. Where there's criteria developed, and then the cities would administer it based on that, uh, given project eligibility. And add their own or modify it from there. Um, the rebate would be instant, similar to the septic rebate program where once a connection's made, it's discounted fifty percent. And then the cities collect those funds and remit them to Lot. The general eligibility criteria that we talked about would try and align with the HUD definition. The eighty percent of area mean, median income, and that, uh, aligns with what the cities are doing overall, it seems. Um, multifamily developments, uh, from a developer, there'd be some type of minimum number of units. Be it twenty percent or all of them, that need to be low income housing in order to qualify. And/or there would be the permanent supportive housing, those transitioning from, uh, homelessness into a home. It could be a whole separate category just for that. Uh, and that's been, uh, a high priority for all the Lot Partners, been talking about that. Legally, there would have to be some property protection, so, uh, a covenant or deed protecting the affordability in perpetuity. Um, if it wasn't in perpetuity, then when that given connection would be converted. And it wasn't affordable housing by the definition, then the CDC charge at that time would have to be paid. Thinking about what the scale of a program like this would look like is if, if it's a hundred equivalent residential units, ERUs or connections. Uh, for each city, then it'd be three hundred ERUs total over the biennium. So just for the pilot, that would be about a million dollars that would need to be funded. Um, and that could be modified, so if there's less connections or a different percentage of a rebate. Then, you know, that could all be, uh, adjusted based on what the cities felt is the best mix of that and the Lot Board. Um, but essentially thinking about if there was a million dollar pilot program in place. Then we would look to offset that revenue from the pilot. The proposal would be to increase the CDC, the connection charge for, uh, a new connection. An additional point five percent for each of those years in the biennium, and what that works out to is about, uh, thirty-five dollars per ERU. Uh, so the current charter just listed here for twenty-twenty-two, our CDC charge is about sixty-six hundred dollars. To put that thirty-five dollars in perspective. There is a model that the service rate charge could be changed, but, um, in our discussions, we decided that that wasn't, uh, the proposal at this time. So I just wanted to clarify, there's no additional service rate charge, what we call our WSC, it'd just be on new connections. And after the end of the biennium at twenty-twenty-four, then we could look back and see how effective the program was. Did it actually incentivize affordable housing, did it help? What, what demand was there, and then look for funding models, uh, should that program go on further, what that would look like. So our next steps, as Mike mentioned, we're, uh, going to be talking to the Lot Board next week on Wednesday. Uh, seeking a Lot Partner feedback, refine the program, get legal reviews. And then, uh, continue to do briefings, and we'd be happy to come back here as well. Uh, I just wanted to note that by way of where we're looking to incorporate things, if the pilot program were to get into the biennial budget. We would want that in place by August, which is when we need to send out that preliminary rate letter to the jurisdictions. Um, it could kind of trail into October, November, when the Lot Board, um, typically approves the budget. But we're looking into nothing right away, a lot of conversations need to happen, but if there was a pilot program in place, it'd be into the next budget. So I'll stop there and see if you have any questions.
Are there any questions, Councilmember Vasquez?
Always, so, I'm, if I was planning on taking advantage of this, if we implemented this. Is that six thousand six hundred-ish roughly what I would save if I were accessing this benefit?
Or ERU?
The connection fee, yeah, okay.
Yeah, good question, the proposal, at least what I listed, would be if it followed the septic conversion one, it would be fifty percent of that, so about thirty-three hundred dollar. Payment or this, whatever way you want to look at it.
Okay, Councilmember Reece Stein?
If I'm understanding it correctly, the, the cost would be, the cost burden would be moved to developers who aren't building affordable houses. So we're not doing it with the, the overall rate payer, we're putting it all on, you'd be putting it all on the backs of development. The cost.
Yeah, in a way, in a way that, that, that's true, it would be any new connection to the system that's not affordable housing would be paying that. So this, the CDC charge would raise from the sixty-six hundred plus the, the rate adjustment, and then it would be fifty percent of that.
So, we have any idea what that's gonna, so that, that's a total hypothetical situation, it's like, how many ERUs are used? Then you have to recalculate for, for the charges to be for the next year.
Didn't you estimate that it would only be thirty-five dollars more, was that in the presentation?
Correct, in order to pay for the pilot, because the adjustment would be made over the two years. Because the million dollars wouldn't be made up, it'd be an adjustment that would be made over that biennium. But then that rate, the CDC rate, would actually be just a little bit higher, so every increase from there also assists with the payback period. So our finance folks looked at it over a twenty-year payback period to pay for the two-year pilot. At the end of the, of the pilot, you know, the finances could be relooked at, and that could be adjusted. And this is just a concept at this point, yeah.
Well, my, my first, you know, glance at it, um, says, like, go for it. My, the, the big question I had is how are you going to guarantee that it stayed affordable, like, there was a question like. We're, we're affordable housing, and then two years later, like, we're no longer affordable housing, you know? And so there, there's going to have to be some sort of mechanism in there that's checking back up on those projects to make sure they're still in affordable housing. But we're, we're definitely in an affordable housing crunch, and, you know, Lacey, we already have it on our books. Where we're waiving fees for affordable housing, but we're not waiving, obviously, lots of fees, we don't have the ability to do that. So this will go in conjunction with that, you know, the little bit differences is we're not, maybe not necessarily putting. The burden on the rest of our rate payers, although it all sort of. Evens out in the end, uh, as well, because we have, we have a budget that we have to meet, and if we have less money coming in, it's accounted for. So it's, we sort of do, but not, not quite directly as if you're doing it here. Um, and the thing is, is as more, that, as more people come online, there are more, there's also more Lot payers, right? And so this is just the connection fee, so it's not like you're reducing the fee after they're already developed. So, um, you know, you have to take that into account too. My, 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 my take on it is, is like, go for it, let's see what we can do, and it'll be interesting to see what comes back. Um, if we can build more units, it seems like this is really a sort of a timing issue. Um, you know, can we line up major projects that are out there with, with this program? And, you know, and we'll see, I have to see how it goes, but, um, my first take as is anything at this point to help get more affordable housing. Is a benefit for the entire community, and so we should, we should do it.
I, I might add, Mayor, that, um, like the city's flexibility with budget. Uh, our septic program has been running now successfully for a few years, we carry those dollars forward, if they don't get spent. They move into the next biennium again, so. I, I guess, you know, when you run a pilot program, you're not really sure. At the end of the day, exactly what it's going to look like, or, you know, how many people are going to come, or how many of these might be ready to go, that's a whole nother question. So I think we have to be prepared to be flexible, that's all I would say about that.
I agree, does any, any other council members have any questions?
I think it's an exciting concept.
Yeah.
Well, no, I just, I, I really am grateful to Mike and Matt for coming tonight. I got a brief exposure to this and was really excited because our council is trying to do all we can. To support affordable housing, so I hope that we can make these concepts work together. And I would, and I see you have your hand up, but if I could just ask Matt a quick question.
Yeah.
To about, you know, my understanding is that there will be some outreach to the community for feedback. This won't be just done in isolation, I'm, I'm gathering that we're going to be talking with developers and. Everybody who would be affected by this.
Sure, yeah, the, the plan is to, to, to reach out to folks, we didn't have any, you know, planned public outreach or something at this point. Because the cities are, are the closest ones connected to all of this, and as far as administering the program. So we're in close connection with a variety of city staff in order to get that feedback, but that's part of this throughout this. Coming months is all of that feedback, we'd like to see if, if folks think this would be effective.
Uh, Councilmember Kunkel.
Yeah, that, that was my question, um, have we, have we got any feedback yet from developers? On, on what, um, what their thoughts are, you know, is this, is this a good idea? Um, is it, I know it's just probably going to raise the cost of, of doing business, that's what it does. Uh, but it would be helpful to hear the feedback, uh, from developers that are directly affected by. That was my only point.
You know, the, the big, the key here is like, you could, you can go through those hundred ERUs pretty quick on multifamily, right? And so, um, but this also could be the thing that makes it feasible to do affordable housing. Cause, cause it's a big fee, the connection fee is a big fee, um, and so if you, if you look at what we're doing along with. You know, this fee, maybe it does make it feasible to do some multifamily. The problem is, is, you, you, it usually takes some planning to do that, you know, the, it's like, we pass this. And then there has to be some outreach, then it takes a while to get that, that project online. And so, uh, I imagine some of that's going to have to happen too, we're going to have to be some flexibility, like, like, please hold on to this if they're. You know, have to be flexible about that, yeah. Councilmember Kunkel, do you have something?
Yeah, yeah, the fee doesn't go away, it just gets absorbed by somebody else, and that, that's when I'm on the fence. I'm like, well, you know, I really like feedback from people who are going to be directly affected by it, uh, other than that, um. That makes a difference.
Yeah, Councilmember Vasquez.
I think, Mayor, what you said makes me wonder, are we? It's exciting to think that we could stack exemptions and incentives from different directions to make. Affordable housing more attractive, more possible, right, to make it pencil out. Is it? I don't have any idea, but is it possible for a developer, once these things are in place, to leverage all of these benefits? Is it going to be relatively simple for someone to line up all of these incentives to actually get the benefits? And I wonder, just, future thought, if we do this, how do we make sure that that picture is clear for someone who's considering building in Lacey? Like, if you, you know, I'm thinking like incentives for putting solar panels on your house. Like, I am overwhelmed with feedback from everywhere, that it's really easy to make money back on getting solar panels installed in your house. Like, can we just make a list, like, these are all the incentives and tax exemptions that you could access if you build affordable housing, all in one place.
So, I, I imagine that's a, that's our community and economic development department needs to be ob- obviously aware of all this. And so someone comes into the desk, say, I want to build affordable housing, I heard about this program, what other programs do you have available? I'm pretty sure, at least in the city of Lacey, we, we have all those different things, especially if you're in midtown, for example, right? You have the multifamily tax exemption on top of this, on top of that, right? It really becomes more feasible to do some of these bigger projects, so, um, I have pretty much faith in our, in our front counters. That we're going to be able to pass that along, but saying that. But saying that, I know since Scott Egger put his screen on earlier, I know he's listening. Do you, do you have any other? Do you have anything you want to add to this? Is there anything that's jumping out at you, Scott?
No, this uh, uh, when council member Cox met with Peter Brooks and I, you know, we're talking about this and she just asked did Deputy Mayor Pratt, how often did she meet with the council to get direction from the council on uh, lot initiatives? And so uh, so this, this was brought forward. This proposal is a little bit different than anything we have because uh, connection fees aren't aren't uh, the fees that are waived in, in our program. So, so there's, there's that difference, but I think the uh, you know, the, the surety, what it takes to can make sure that the, that the homes remain uh, affordable. Uh, you know, like deed restrictions and that are, are the same. So, so the only difference is we haven't uh, provided relief through, through uh, yeah, through connection fees.
So you're right. This is a little bit different. We've done other fees where we waived, but we haven't paid, we haven't waived this fee in particular. So I agree. Does he, rest, do you, do you council have any other questions?
Mayor, if I could just build on what the conversation before about the ease of connecting these, the the reason why the instant rebate was proposed is just to empower each city to leverage this how, how you would need to. So lot doesn't require the person connecting or the developer or the project to come down to lot, fill out paperwork. That's all handled by the city. And then if eligibility is met, the payment's made a lot at fifty percent. It's just clean that way.
I agree. Well, I, I'm really interested in seeing how this is going to play out and I, I really hope for the best and uh, we'll see how it goes. So, but thank you for the presentation. Really appreciate it. Any other questions from this council? Anyone saying no gets it? Okay, then you, it looks like you got uh, pretty much unanimous thumbs up go forward and um, you know, it'd be interesting to see what the, the development community comes back and says about this. And so I'm, I'm sure that's going to be some valuable feedback, but um, with that, we've reached the end of our agenda. As always, you keep it classy, Lacy, and on a call, I mean adjourned. See ya.